Come out and get loose and come to their house.
Oh, fun.
They had a black cat one time that would come visiting every time they'd be gone.
Now they have a bridge?
Yeah.
Actually, it's in Michigan.
We did.
Must be five o'clock.
Yep.
It's about it. The lights reflecting on that clock.
The computer doesn't say so yet. Computer says four forty-five.
I'd like to call this board meeting to order. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
We just have the Personnel Addendum. That's at each of your places. Other than that, there's no other changes.
Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
I move we accept the agenda as amended.
Okay, I have a motion. Anyone like to second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our recognition and presentations, which we have none, moving on to the approval of our consent agenda items, which include the minutes of our February twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen regular meeting, our personnel report, our financial reports, including the February bills list and our February bond bills list, our bond budget summary, our professional development, including individual development plans, college credit, building staff development plans, and district staff development plans. We're approving Meadowlark PTO gift acceptance for playground equipment in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. We're also approving Salina Adult Basic Education Fiscal Year Eighteen RFP in the amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. We're also approving federal Head Start and Early Head Start Continuation Grant application in the amount of four million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars, with a twenty-five percent match of one million one hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars to include in-kind donated services and volunteers.
I have a question about part of the consent agenda.
Sure.
It's about the Salina Adult Education Center, and I just didn't quite understand it. There's, it talked about the RFP narrative submitted with program level funding amounts instead of designated funding amounts, and I just didn't understand what that meant.
Sure. This year, because we had new federal legislation come down, we have to request our funding. Instead of every year when it's continuation, we give, we're given designated amounts based on our outcomes and past performance. So designated is when it's off a performance. The program level is we, at the local levels, are requesting amounts, which happens whenever new legislation. The last time we did this was two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Madam President, I would like to applaud the Meadowlark PTA for the generous gift that has been given to Meadowlark School. I know the kids are really going to enjoy that, and we thank you so very much for doing that.
Any additional comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mary Ann?
Madam President, I move the approval of the consent agenda items.
All right. I have a motion. Anyone like to second that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our public forum. If anyone would like to address the board, now would be your time. You guys want to address the board? No, they're leaving. All right. Never mind. Never mind. All right, moving on.
Have you signed it? Oh, there is somebody who wants to address?
I think he probably wants to address the action.
I think that's related to the athletic trainer. So you'll have an opportunity then.
Yes. So, moving on to our action agenda item, we'll be setting a special meeting with Mr. Hall.
Yes, Madam President, this, the purpose of this meeting, I would ask the board to set a special board meeting for April fourth, two thousand and seventeen, at five PM for the purpose of interviewing construction management firms, after which the board will make a decision to hire, hopefully hire, one of the firms who will be completing the work on the Salina Stadium renovation.
I move we set a special meeting date of Tuesday, April fourth, two thousand and seventeen, beginning at five PM, as presented.
Okay. I have a motion. And Mary Ann, would you like to second it? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our discussion agenda, beginning with our athletic trainer services in Salina, with Salina Regional Health Center, with Mr. Hall.
Yes, Madam President, thank you, Board of Education members. Hopefully I can get this working right. First of all, before I get started on presenting this proposal to you, I'd like to introduce a couple of folks who are in the audience. First of all, representing Salina Regional Health Center, we have Julie Getz, who's the Director of Business Development and Physician Recruitment. And also with Julie is Eric Justco, who's an athletic trainer, who's employed by Salina Regional Health Center. Is that correct? Okay. Also with us today is Mr. Ken Stonebreaker, who's the Athletic Director of South High School, and Greg Merring, who's the Athletic Director of Central High School. And I've asked these folks to come here today in the event that there's questions that the Board of Education might have, either from a Salina Regional Health Center perspective or from a practical standpoint in terms of what our athletic directors face in terms of providing athletic trainer services to our student athletes. So this is an extremely important issue as it goes to providing for the safety and welfare of our student athletes. We go back quite, we have quite a bit of a history when it comes to providing athletic trainer services. Prior to two thousand and thirteen, for a number of years, we were fortunate at Salina High School South to actually have a certified athletic trainer who's also a certified teacher. And it worked out very, very well because they were on staff. At Central High, during that same amount of time, we had, worked closely with Dr. Harbin's office, who contracted with Kansas Western University, and our athletic trainer services was provided to Central High in that manner. In two thousand and thirteen, when we, or two thousand and twelve, when we lost our certified athletic trainer, who's a certified teacher at Salina High School South, it created a situation then where we had one school who had athletic trainer services and the other school did not. And so we had to create an avenue, a solution, to create a more equitable arrangement so that we could offer athletic trainer services to both of our five A high schools. That being said, Dr. Harbin encouraged us to approach Kansas Western University. At that time, they had a certified athletic trainer program and inquired about us contracting directly with Kansas Western University to provide those services to our high school. In fact, that's what we did do in two thousand and thirteen to fifteen. We signed a two-year agreement. This Board of Education approved that agreement for a two-year term to provide athletic trainer services to both Salina High School Central and Salina High School South. Again, at that time, Kansas Wesleyan had a certified athletic trainer program. That particular agreement came up for renewal two years later, in two thousand and fifteen, came back to the Board of Education, renewed that agreement for another two-year period. At that point in time, however, there was conversations happening at Kansas Wesleyan that they were planning on dropping or discontinuing their certified athletic trainer program. So from that point on, it became a matter of they would go out and they would, would hire individuals who would come in, who had just completed their certified athletic trainer program elsewhere. They would come into Kansas Wesleyan and work on an advanced degree, say an MBA, while they were still providing athletic trainer services to our two high schools. And so that created some challenges for us. One of the challenges, the most obvious challenges we had is that every two years, we would end up having to replace an athletic trainer. So there wasn't as much consistency, and we couldn't count on really anyone beyond the two years. I think as a matter of fact, we had one athletic trainer who stayed one year. And so it's very difficult to build those relationships when you have that. The total cost under that, under that current contract, which expires June thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen, was thirty-five thousand dollars, which is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars per school. And so from that standpoint, you know, and that didn't change during the four years that we had services. Last year, about a year ago, I was approached by Salina Regional Health Center of their interest in offering athletic trainer services to our two high schools and to our student athletes. At that point in time, I shared with them that we still had another year left in our two-year agreement, so it was not timely, it was not timely at all from that point in time to discuss it. But I told them a year later, we would certainly be willing to sit down and listen to them. It was approached again this past fall by Salina Regional Health Center of their interest again. We sat down, we discussed it, and from that came the proposal that you have before you today. Some of the things that, that I believe is very important, that I believe that Salina Regional Health Center could offer is the fact that they are a healthcare provider. I believe the quality of services will be very, very good. And I think anything that we can do to upgrade the quality of services to provide for our student athletes is extremely important. Another advantage that we have, those of you who were on the board at the time, when I first came in two thousand and eleven, we were fortunate to have a partnership with Salina Regional Health Center on Concussive Impact. And if you recall that, that partnership, we still have that partnership to this day, where we offer concussive baseline testing so that if there are student athletes who are suffering from a concussion, we can diagnose that through concussive protocols at that point in time, and then we have a baseline that we can compare it to for subsequent tests. And that was something that came out of that partnership with Salina Regional Health Center. It's been a very, very positive. We still give the concussive baseline assessments to many of our student athletes in both middle school and high school. So we believe that this would be a natural extension of that partnership. The school district has, as I said, we have partnership, we have partnered with Salina Regional in other areas. You know, we had a good partnership with Kansas Western, so I don't want to speak ill of that. I think that they have provided adequate services for us. However, I do believe going to that next level, that Salina Regional can offer a much higher level of expertise, consistency will be extremely important. They actually have certified athletic trainer. We have a certified athletic trainer here who's here this evening. They're actually employed by orthopedic clinics here in town, so they actually are working on their craft during the day, after which then they will be providing athletic trainer services to us. I believe that the expertise and the quality will be much higher than what we've had in the past, which I think is good for our student athletes. One of the items that we talk about when we had preliminary conversations with Salina Regional that we absolutely had to have was coverage. And as I talk about Kansas Wesleyan, we've been very fortunate that we've had excellent coverage with Kansas Wesleyan. Their athletic trainers were at all of our practices. Their athletic trainers traveled with our varsity football teams. They stayed here with the varsity football teams. They're at all the home events of the major sports. And so that was a non-negotiable with us when we started having that conversation with Salina Regional, that we absolutely needed to make sure that we had certified athletic trainers on hand when we needed them. Within your board packet, you have the proposal, the cost proposal, and between the two, I mean, basically, we took about, talked about twenty hours per week, which is onsite injury evaluation, management clinic, that's being at the practices, that's taping, that's doing some site evaluations, and if anything's going on on a daily basis. Beyond that, they cover all varsity football, home and, home and way games, all other sports, to include football, volleyball, cross-country soccer, basketball, wrestling track, baseball, softball, for varsity JV and ninth at all home events. And so the commitment is that they would be at all of those home events. So when you look at the billable hours, the difference in billable hours, you have Central High that has a total estimated billable hours of a thousand and five hours at twenty-five dollars an hour. South High School at thousand twenty-three hours at twenty-five dollars an hour. Comes out to twenty-five thousand one twenty-five at Central High and twenty-five thousand five seventy-five at South High for a total district cost, which would be fifty thousand seven hundred dollars, which is a difference of fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars in the current contract that we have with Kansas Wesleyan. So it is an increase roughly of about seventy-five hundred to seventy-seven hundred dollars per high school. With that, I believe, we're getting greater expertise. And when you start talking, begging for the buck, I believe we're going to get the expertise we have because we have much more hired, more qualified certified athletic trainers, plus the fact they're going to be employed here locally, so they're not going anywhere. And so we could have some consistency. It's extremely important that we have athletic trainers who can build relationships with coaches, build relationships with parents, and build relationships with student athletes. It's extremely important. I believe there'll be less turnover of athletic trainers as a result of going this direction. Now, the other issue, I want to make some, make sure we have some clarifications because if we have certified athletic trainers who are working with student athletes, they may be having them on the, on the sideline, they may be having them on the court, but if there's a need to refer them, they can certainly do that. However, it is and always will be the parents' decision in terms of who they would like to provide healthcare for their son or their daughter. And so there is no one locking them in to saying, if you, if you have a certified athletic trainer, you have to go to one of our orthopedic clinics. That's absolutely not the case. It is ultimately the parents' decision in terms of what healthcare services they want to provide for their son and daughter. So I want to make sure we clarify that on the front end. Also, just as a matter of comparison, we went and researched some of the Arch Valley schools and athletic trainers, and we're very fortunate, as I said, to be able to offer athletic trainer services. May schools, for instance, they, they contracted via Christy. And the cost of their athletic trainers is about thirty-four thousand dollars per athletic trainer. And so that kind of gives you an idea of the ballpark where we're in right now. Wichita schools, they also contracted via Christy at thirty-four thousand five hundred per athletic trainer. Andover schools goes through Cypress Orthopedics, and they contracted twenty thousand dollars per trainer. And they have Hutchinson High School, which goes through Pinnacle Sports Medicine Orthopedics. They also contracted twenty-four thousand dollars per trainer. So we're in the ballpark in terms of costs, and it's interesting, too, that each of those schools go through a healthcare provider in terms of providing their athletic trainer services. So I thought that was also interesting. The agreement that we are looking at right now is a two-year agreement. If the board approves that, it's just a discussion item this evening, but if the board approves that, it would begin June, July one, two thousand and seventeen, and would end on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And so with that, and that's a lot of information, if there's any questions at all, I'd be more than happy to address that. Or if there's questions specific to Salina Regional Health, we have folks here who can answer that. Or from a practical standpoint, in terms of the services that are provided on a regular basis, we have both of our two athletic directors here who could certainly address those questions. So, any questions that I could address for you this time? Yes?
Couple of things. What do we pay for the IMPACT program? What, do we know about that?
Yeah, we do. I mean.
Somebody knows.
What's that?
Under five.
Under five, under five thousand.
Okay, and so.
See, that, that's a license.
This is just added on to this.
Well, that's a license that we have. We don't pay Salina Regional for that. We have a direct license with IMPACT. And so we purchase so many licenses to give so many assessments a year. You think it's about, there were about five thousand per year to do that. But that's an annual cost with IMPACT, so that's the, we purchase those assessments.
Okay. I have another question. I will think of it in a minute.
Okay.
Doctor, the gentleman, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Doctor Daley. I think he wanted to address the board about this item. I think now would be a good time for that.
Thank you. My name is Brad Daley. I'm one of the orthopedic surgeons with the other clinic, which is the Orthopedic Sports Health Clinic of Salina. And I just have a few, few things I wanted to bring up. First of all, I'm not in opposition of this. If this is the way they vote, I understand the reasoning for that. I would say this is somewhat of a new service line for Salina Regional. I think they've been doing this for less than a year. Eric, the trainer's here. Okay. And I haven't met you yet, but, so I think it's kind of a new service line. So I'd like, if you do move ahead with this proposal, I guess I'd like to make sure that, you know, at a year or some other time in the future, you're going to reassess to see whether or not, and the first I'd heard of this was when it was in the paper on Saturday. So how accurate some of those goals that the hospital set, I think it needs to be reassessed at a year. Are they meeting those goals? And that's a lot of commitment for the hours and for one or possibly two trainers that Salina Regional is going to have. So that it's re-looked at by either the athletic directors to make sure they're meeting those goals. I would say that since May of two thousand and sixteen, our group itself, which is five orthopedic surgeons, including Dr. Harbin, who's provided care to the high schools, you know, for as many years as I can remember, he's been on the sidelines. But, so we're five orthopedic surgeons, three PAs in our clinic. And so since May of two thousand and sixteen, we have no relationship with Salina Regional. And, but we do have a longstanding relationship with the community, with USDA three or five, taking care of student athletes. And I'd like to hope that that could continue for us. Again, especially with Dr. Harbin joining our group because he's done it for so many years. I know he enjoys it. When I saw that in the paper on Saturday, the quote that kind of got me, and I don't know where the quote, but it said, "More immediate access to orthopedic services." And I just know with Harbin being on the sidelines, that's pretty immediate. Our group, we're always on call, so all you have to do is call our clinic number. And one of the orthopedic physicians in our group, it's always one of us, will call and respond to that. Even if it's on the field, we can answer those questions. And the biggest thing I think going forward is I want to make sure that if there's a parent meeting before the sports, I want to make sure there's some kind of formal announcement to those parents that they do have a choice, you know, from, if they have an injury that needs orthopedic care, they have a choice of where they can go. And, you know, you saw a lot of orthopedic groups around the state that provide these services. And they do that for a reason. The reason is to direct patients to their clinic. I mean, that, we all know that's the case, and so. Eric Terry's the trainer. I haven't actually answered a meeting yet, but I'm just going to speak for our group that, you know, if you have student athletes, if you're working with South, and they, they want to see us, we're happy to answer any phone calls. We'll work with you. Being employed by Salina Regional, just because we have no affiliation, I don't think that would bar you from ever calling us. We would send clinic notes and follow-up notes, whatever you needed for any of that, so. Those are the comments I had.
Okay, thank you.
And one, just to follow up, and thank you, Dr. Daley. I appreciate you being here this evening. One thing I might share is that I'd already visited with Mr. Stonebreaker, Mr. Merring, about absolutely ensuring at our parent meetings that parents have the, the option of choosing whatever healthcare provider or orthopedic services they need, and that they're not locked into anyone. And so they plan on having that, sharing that information with parents.
Since this is just a discussion item, do we have any more comments or questions, Ann?
Yes, my question is, it seems like the, the plan is for, what, twenty hours a week or something like that? If I'm not seeing that right, on the right spot here. But it seems like it would be like jammed up one week and hardly any another week when there wasn't, between seasons or something, that it wouldn't really come out to an even twenty hours a week. And I'm, I would be, I would want us to make sure and keep track of how many hours they actually spend working on this project.
Well, and we, we will track that. Now, one of the items that we discussed when we were, when I visited with Ms. Getz and as well as the A.D.s is that, you know, it's not an exact science, you're absolutely right. It's not twenty hours per week because it depends on what's going on that week. There are some weeks that are going to be shorter, some weeks are going to be longer. And so as a result of that, it, we believe it's going to end up being relatively close. It'll be an average pretty close to it. However, we're, we've also visited with Salina Regional about locking that number in so that it isn't any higher, you know. So it is what it is. And so we believe that the average, I think, will come around, and that, that's just an estimate, but that, but we believe in the end, it's probably going to be pretty close.
Okay. Is this just for in-town or does this include out-of-town?
It includes out-of-town for varsity football.
Only?
Mm-hmm.
Not basketball?
That is correct.
We're hoping the opposing team has a.
And typically, they do. I mean, I think with the Arch River Valley, they actually have trainers at most of the sites that they go to. And so it's kind of a unwritten message that when you go out of town, the average, the athletic trainer that's covering the home team also covers the visiting team as well. The only exception to that because of the nature of the sport is varsity football.
Any additional comments or questions, or we'll see this again at our next meeting?
In two weeks, you bet.
I simply wanted to say that my concern about it was as well that this would not advance the business interest of any particular party. I think that's very important for us.
All right, moving on in our agenda to our school board reports and upcoming dates of importance, which include Saturday, March eighteenth. We have a chamber legislative meeting at the Chamber Annex at eight-thirty. Sunday, May seventh, we have a retirement reception and recognition at Lakewood at three PM. Thursday, May eleventh, is the DCP graduation at Salina West at four PM. And then Sunday, May fourteenth, is our graduation, starting with South High at two PM and Central High following at five PM. Thursday, May eighteenth, is the SAEC graduation ceremony at seven PM. And Saturday, May twentieth, is another legislative chamber meeting at the Chamber Annex at eight-thirty. Brett, would you like to start us off with our committee reports? Mary Ann?
Smokey Hill Service Center met last Thursday evening, and we had, we made a couple of new hires.
Okay, I have a few things. I did attend the Heartland Policy Council meeting. And I guess the biggest thing, it seemed to me at that meeting, was that they, in the past year, they made a big effort to document all the volunteer time that's done for Heartland. And as a result, the last school year had, they got twice as much credit for in-kind hours as they had the year before, like six hundred thousand dollars more in in-kind credit to match their federal money. So that was a, a big, a big effort they made last year. Hasn't been quite as high this year, but they're still working on it and making sure people report their hours. I also attended the National Honor Society Ceremony at Central and Career Fair at Lakewood. I went to this Salina Choral Festival, which had South and Central's choirs singing at that. Also, the two ribbon cuttings, that's one at Stewart and one at Sunset, where I really was so impressed with the drumming event that they did at that, the fifth graders. And thanks to Salina Arts and Humanities, I've been in the schools singing Revolutionary War songs with grade five at Meadowlark and songwriting with grade four at Oakdale and grade five at Coronado and now at Sunset. I also attended Dancing with the Stars to see Bill showing off his new skill as a dancer. Finally, I want to thank South High's Drama Department because at the first of March, I got to read a Women's History Month proclamation for the city of Salina, and I was asked to do so in my suffragette costume. But my hat was not appropriate to the first decades of the nineteen hundreds. And so South High School's Drama Department provided me with a suffragette hat. Thanks to them. That's all. I did attend two ribbon cuttings at Stewart and Sunset, and, and lots of parents showed up at both. It was overwhelming, really, at Stewart. At both schools, the students did an extraordinary job with singing at one and drumming at the other. So they were happy. I was able to spend some time with, with former teachers that I know and also parents and students, asking them what they thought, and they were all excited about what took place. Visited at both art pieces.
I attended a very brief meeting at which Governor Brownback announced the expansion of support services for troubled youth and family. Mrs. Rector and I were there for that, and it was very brief. Largely an opportunity for some publicity, I think. So that was my contribution this time.
And my meetings start tomorrow, so, but I did, I did attend the induction for Central, which was phenomenal. It was amazing to see all the children that I knew when they were very small. Not so much anymore. The Lakewood Career Fair and Science Fair was interesting. Got to witness Mr. Hall and, and City Manager Gage and Mr. Thompson from Kansas Wesleyan in a panel discussion, which was really good because while the students were in the, in the commons area, in the gym, going through the career piece, the parents were being educated on the propriety of offering this in, in middle school. It was extremely interesting. Made me wish I had a child in middle school because they have a career cruising software that's available, and it follows them for several years after they're out of high school. So we've really, really got our children on a great track for improving their, their worth and their accessibility and college readiness and career readiness. We're doing that. The science piece, I saw a lot of penguin houses. It was very interesting, out of aluminum foil and cotton balls. And they had their, they had their, all of the relative information about the masks before and after they put the ice cube in. It was, it was just incredible. And I loved all the young ladies that were there doing that particular function. That was excellent. And then we had board games. They created board games. So there was those two. And then, of course, the ribbon cuttings, which were, they were just amazing.
I, too, attended the Career Fair, which I thought was very interesting. They had a little, I don't remember who it was, but they had a robot running around, talking to people. And I thought that was very odd and strange all at the same time. I think that parents did take advantage of the panel discussion that Ramona talked about, and I thought that was very good as well. The Science Fair, I did learn a lot about penguins and their housing. They also had the board games, but they also had some city planning that they had done on the walls that some of the older students had done, which I thought was very interesting. I liked the piece you were talking about, their little, oh, the, the boards that they, they created for the penguin housing. I thought it was interesting that they, as an accountant, I'm probably the only one that would find this interesting, but they actually had to do a cost analysis of the cost of, of improving their little penguin house, which I thought was kind of interesting. So those two things in conjunction were, were really interesting. I also attended the ribbon cuttings at Stewart and Sunset. I also attended Dancing with Salina Stars, and I, I think that someone should have taken my checkbook away before I got there. I also heard Ann on Friendly Fire. You didn't mention that, Ann. I thought she did a great job representing the school board and how we run our meetings here. And I also attended Salina West's graduation, and that was a very moving graduation. Those are very heartwarming and very special to go to. So those were my committee reports. And so then we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. And just as a follow-up, really on two items, and Ms. Newsom mentioned the, well, somebody even mentioned the Career Fair at Lakewood, which was very well done, I thought. But I have to kind of give a shout out to Brandon Cheeks. Brandon Cheeks is a teacher at Lakewood Middle School, and he actually put that together. He'd been working on it for about a year. And he put that together as a project for STLA, which is our Salina Teacher Leadership Academy, and did really a phenomenal job. It's very well organized. He had some good representative, business representatives there. I just thought Brandon did a really nice job, and so congratulations to Brandon on, on all the hard work that he put into that. And then the other one, there's a question, Ann, you had a question during the athletic trainer agreement about concussive impact. And there, we looked, just looked it up, and it's twelve hundred dollars a year is what we spend to purchase the licenses to give so many baseline assessments. I just want to make sure we had that for clarification. Tomorrow, March fifteenth, Matt Gary, by the way, was, was recognized as the two thousand and seventeen CMA Music Teacher of Excellence. As such, there's going to be a major event at South Middle School tomorrow, really begins at one o'clock. I think board members have been invited to attend that. I think they'd like to have you there at least by twelve-thirty or so. But we have a number of different activities that are going to be happening in conjunction with that. We have, it's basically the Music Inspires Tour visits South Middle School. We have a young artist by the name of Tegan Marie, who is a Radio Disney artist, who will be providing a concert for the students. We have a presentation of a cash award to South Middle School. We have a presentation of a cash award to South Middle School, which will be matched by Disney, Music Disney. And then we also have festivities will begin at 1:00, if you be there by 12:30 or so. But it, it looks to be an extremely exciting event. And so I would encourage, if you cannot all make it, if you be there about 12:30, and I think it's going to be an exciting time, and most deserving for Mr. Gary, so.
What's the location for that?
Be South Middle School.
Where?
And, well, just go in the front door, and, and if there's parking, if not, park out on the south side. It's good, the primary facility will be the new gymnasium. And I think this will be the, the, be the first event in that new gym. And so that'll be exciting as well. So, once you get there, just ask folks where the new gymnasium is. Well, you can probably see it, because it's the largest structure there now. So, so just go to the new gym and you'll be able to find everything, so. Everyone's already mentioned the ribbon cuttings at Stewart and Sunset, so the only thing I'll say about that is all elementary schools finished. And that's kind of nice. And so we're kind of moving on, we have South Middle School coming up next. Obviously, our two high schools, over spring break, there's going to be a lot of activity happening at South High. We have folks who'll be moving into the new East Wing. As a matter of fact, all the furniture was being installed up to this point. Over spring break, all the teacher's items will be moved into the, into the East Wing. And so it's exciting that we're starting to occupy the new facility at South. One I do want to share with the board, we're, we're looking at some changes to our enrollment process. Enrollment as we enroll folk, enroll kids for the upcoming school year. This upcoming year, we're looking at having one site, and that site will be at South Middle School. And for, so instead of going to all the individual schools, we want to have one site and have students, have folks go all to that one site to enroll their kids. The advantage to that is if you're a parent and has kids in multiple buildings, you only have to go to one school. And so that, that, there's a tremendous advantage. We believe that by doing this, hopefully we'll get more kids enrolled sooner. The date that I have for that, and I'll verify with Shannon, is that July 24th? Yeah. And so, and we'll still do our online enrollment as well. And our online enrollment has been extremely successful. In calendar year 2016, we have taken in over a million dollars on online credit sales with our enrollment fees. And so that's, it's been extremely exciting. I think this year we had about, what, 60, it's about 62% of our students enrolled online. And so it's been phenomenally successful. And so we're going to continue to move forward with that. I was extremely excited and privileged this morning to be at South Middle School and present the Secondary, USD 305 Secondary Teacher of the Year to Ms. Misty Bradley. And Misty is a middle school math teacher, and a phenomenal teacher. And I've had, I've had the opportunity on numerous occasions to sit on Ms. Bradley's class, and she's just, just, just an excellent teacher. So she will absolutely represent USD 305 well moving forward. We have not yet announced the Elementary Teacher of the Year yet. That's upcoming in, within the next week or so. Also, last week, I had the opportunity, I think it's probably out on Access, Access TV right now, is to do the Superintendent Corner with Marnie Ryan. And so you might check out Access TV and see the programming on that. We've talked about basically all things 305. And so that was exciting to be able to do that. Thursday morning, I'll be on KSAL with Rich and Jeff, and we'll be talking about legislative issues, we'll be talking about bond issues, and, and again, a lot of things 305. Other than that, legislature, they're still talking about a rescission bill, about sometime of a cut. That's kind of seems to be coming out of the Senate at this point in time. Hasn't materialized yet, I don't think there's a lot of taste for that. But it, I find it very difficult that they would consider that on the heels of the court's decision. But we need to kind of just continue to monitor that, so. And yes, I did in fact survive Dancing with Salina Stars narrowly, but I did, so. And that's all I have, Madam President.
All right, and we need an executive session?
Yes, Madam President, I could request an executive session for 10 minutes for negotiations, please.
Okay, anyone like to make that motion?
How much time do we need before, 10 till quarter?
I think if we go maybe a quarter to, or yeah, 45, 5:45.
All right. I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 5:45 for 10 minutes for the purpose of discussing employer-employee negotiations. Because of this matter, were discussed in open session, it might jeopardize resolution of the negotiation issues. And that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 5:55 in the conference room.
All right, I have a motion, anyone like to second that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.